I'll call a meeting to order. And without objection, continue the reading of the minutes until our next meeting, as they are not yet prepared.
I'll, I'll, I'll second that.
The first order of business is case. Case twenty twenty-five dash nineteen at four oh three, four oh five Broadway. The petitioner is New Properties LLC.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. Good evening, members. James Cipuleta, five Fremont Street in Winthrop, representing the applicant who has applied for a special permit to alter or increase or extend a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and also a number of variances with regard to dimensions that already are in place, nothing being built outside the footprint. When we were last before the planning board, there had been several suggestions, good suggestions made to Mr. Choi, who was the project architect. He went back and spent some time at the, the drawing board and has submitted some amended plans hoping, hopefully taking into, in its entirety, the comments made by the, by the planning board. And Mr. Chairman, with your permission, may Mr. Choi explain those to the planning board, and then we'll answer questions if necessary at the conclusion. Thank you, sir.
David Choi, architect.
David, could you just use that mic?
David Choi, architect for this project. I think on the second floor, the extension of the function space, the biggest comment we heard was needing storage space for temporary furnish, furnishing of that function space. So we accommodated that rather large hundred-square-foot storage space on the same level. So we addressed that comment. If you go to the next, next, next page. The other big comments were, one of the biggest comments was the fact that one of the bedrooms was very small. So we actually relaid out the two units and made the front one on Broadway side, much more reasonable, one bedroom, six hundred square foot. Two bedrooms, bathroom, bathroom and kitchen, kitchen that's there is part of the, the open living E I K. We actually increased that unit size as was, from the comments that we heard last time. Not only that, we also decreased the size of the Division Street side unit. But the most alien point is the fact that this bedroom in the back has been significantly increased from its original size. So you could, you could see the bedrooms are now normalized sizes, hundred and twenty-three square feet, hundred and twenty-six, and this is hundred and seven square feet. So it's, we listened to the board and we adjusted the plan so that it's a much more reasonable layout. And essentially, what we had originally presented was very minimal work to reduce the cost. But I think obviously the owner listened and wanted to listen to the board and made significant improvements to the plans. So that's, those are really, and if you could go to the, the next page. Yeah, the other, the other aspect, the other update is that we had, we did have a meeting with the Historic Commission, and they had made comments relative to what they want to see. The owner is committed to keeping the mural and hiring an artist to, to continue that mural program along Division Street. It's in the, it's recorded in the Historic Commission. And also, the Historic Commission also said that we should also install decorative guardrails that mimic the adjacent building, so that, we listened to that as well. So we wanted to abide by whatever the Historic Commission wanted us to implement as part of the architecture, and the owner had agreed to that as well. So those are sort of the four major moves that we had made to improve the plans since the last time we met. All right. Thank you.
Also, just to add, you know, I think in, during the Historical Commission meeting, during that design review process, I think there was a question around like, you know, why can't we put windows? Or why are there no windows on that side of the building? And I believe it's because it's, it's something with the building code. David, you might want to explain that. And that's why the commission elected to push for the mural, trying to extend up to that side.
Right. So this is a zero-sideline. It actually is on the, on the, on the lot line. And I mean, I discourage the client from putting in any windows because it's of code violation, having zero setback. So we are committed to putting the mural and decorating the backside, if you will. But I think they're also committed to cleaning up the stucco. Stucco was mentioned during that Historic Commission meeting. And so we are committed to cleaning up the stucco on the party wall side. Really, at this point, it's a blank slate because we don't have an artist assigned. But it is a program that we understand along, or it's, their initiatives and they're also decorative murals already on Division Street. So we want to continue that, and the owner is committed to that. And, and the owner was on, on, at the meeting and, yeah, committed to the continuation of the mural artist work.
You referred to decorative guardrails. Can you describe?
So at the Historic Commission meeting, they mentioned that they would like to see these guardrails that are in the adjacent building, use that as a motif to create a decorative or guardrail around the roof. It's actually not going to be used as a roof deck. We did explain that to the commission, but that was one of the, one of the design features that they wanted to see.
I see. Okay. I was thinking you meant ballards. Okay. Guardrail on.
Guardrail, yeah.
Thank you.
Instead of a parapet, parapet would be non, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't look as architectural. So, and so that was, that was the improvement that we're committed to making, kind of continuing the architecture of the adjacent building, so.
And so you're saying that that's not going to be a roof deck out there?
There is no plan for a roof deck, and we never put roof deck on, on the, any of the plans. There's no.
Okay. And is there a gap between the building where the fire escape is and that door right there? I mean, I'm getting to, you know, it's, might not be intended to be a roof deck, but in fact, might the tenants use it as such anyways, if they can get to it?
I think we did not put that on the plan, and it's not part of the permit application. And there was no intention of putting in any roof deck, and that was not mentioned in any of the citation or, so.
Right. And I think what I'm saying is, is, you know, and that's all well and good. Or, you know, if it was to be a roof deck, that's a conversation as well. But maybe we might, if it's not intended to be that, maybe we might want to buttress the obstacle to that a little bit more. It looks like you could just walk right out onto there from the diagram that you have there.
Yeah, that's actually for, it's actually maintaining the existing fire escape. And that was the, that was the intent to maintain the existing fire escape from that third-floor unit. So.
Right, right. That is there a way that, that obstructs the access to the, to the roof there? Since it's not intended to be a roof deck, is there a way that is a barrier?
So do you have like safety concerns that somebody's going to go out there and?
I do, I do.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly, right. We could certainly. Yeah, yeah, I mean, we could certainly, right, we could certainly put another layer of, of guardrail along the path. We could certainly, yeah, that's a feature that could be a condition of, of the approval here. So, yeah, we could certainly do that. It's not, it's not something that is, goes against, you know, what the Historic Commission said or anything like that, so I think it would be a good feature. We agree.
Very good. Thank you.
Does anyone have any more questions on the board about this project? Do we want to make a motion here? Let's make a motion to, do we want to approve, make a motion to approve this project with the condition that the, the roof is secured so that people cannot access the roof deck for safety concerns? The motion is before the board.
I'd also like to see if we can make, that the artist be from Chelsea, for the muralist, comes from Chelsea, not from an outside source. I'd like that to be a condition.
Okay, we can amend the, the motion on the floor to include that the artist be a Chelsea artist?
Seconded.
We have to.
Oh, conditions.
Give you the conditions, which are, in order to receive your special permit, the standard conditions, including the ones mentioned previously, are applicable. The petitioner must submit the following plans: a lighting plan with all lights compliant with I S, I D S A standards, a rodent control plan, waste management plan, construction management plan. And prior to the issuance of the building permit, the petitioner must participate in a design review with the Department of Permitting and Land Use Planning, with the consideration of the comments from the Chelsea Historical Commission due to its location in Bellingham Square Historic District and its designation as a historic structure. The occupants of the two-bedroom unit will be ineligible to participate in the city's on-street parking program.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion is passed, and we will recommend approval.
Thank you very much.
And the, the zoning board meeting is Tuesday, December ninth.
Next on the agenda is case twenty twenty-five twenty at fifty-nine to sixty-one Carey Avenue. Roy Grillo is the petitioner.
Yes, I am Roy Grillo. I'm the owner of Carey Ave.
My name is Raquel Grillo. Good evening. Okay, so we're proposing another unit to be built on top. Some of the concerns from the last meeting was, and I think the biggest one was the lack of uniform on the outside. And so we've adjusted the plans to show that there will be vinyl siding from the bottom to the top. And I think a couple of windows were added as well, just to match the bottom where that bumpout is. Yeah, another concern was the one closet on one of the plans. We fixed that, so now everybody gets closets. Another concern were the parking spaces, and so there's plenty of on-street parking. And we will be placing like a bike rack in between where the, the fence is. I don't know if you can see the picture? Yeah, there's lots of public transportation around, buses, train stations like two minutes away. And we know like the tenants there currently rely on that as their transportation. Another concern was if there was going to be enough support for the third floor. We did do a letter, I believe it's certified from the engineer. And the last concern was the construction with the tenants. So we're planning to do the outside walls and the new roof with the existing roof over there to protect the floor from like rain, snow while doing the construction. And we did bring up the idea of constructing the additional unit to the tenants there, and we gave them the option, if they wanted to stay or not, and they decided they wanted to stay when all of that is happening. I believe there was also one where someone had a question about like when the fire happened. William, to the honor of finding out when that happened, I believe it was in nineteen eighty-two.
There's not much else. It just says that there's a, the fire happened at this address in nineteen eighty-two, so I really couldn't find any other records.
We appreciate it, though.
Thank you for listening. These are much improved. We like this design a lot better. Yep, did a good job on trying to integrate it and make it look cohesive and increase the light for the tenants and the balance. Well done.
My only question, very much appreciate changing the third floor to match the second on the elevation. I didn't see it on the floor plans. I assume that was just because it was easier to draw the floor plans as like a square, but that it will actually be there. I just wanted to confirm.
Yes.
Thank you.
There's also, I believe, a building, like a couple's houses down, that kind of has like the same design as well with like the bumpout, so we'll try to match that. It'll be all nice and uniform.
I really like what you've done with the design here. I think this does blend into the neighborhood pretty well there. I'm familiar with the area. I think this, this kind of cleaned-up design will fit in nicely. I like what you did there. Thank you.
I have a concern about the roof. So I see that you have built, I've forgotten what it's called. There's a name for that little building on top of the roof? Thank you.
Oh, the access for the roof?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure how, if the tenants have access to that?
No.
Okay, so, because it's, you know, it's, and it also has to be white. The roof has to be a white roof.
Oh, the roof has to be white?
The roof has to be white.
Is that forced on all of Chelsea Construction, or is that up to us adding it as a condition?
That's a condition that you guys are adding. And it's a condition that you often add.
Yeah, yeah, we often add it in.
I, I just wanted to, because otherwise, I mean, like everybody else aboard, I love the, all the work you did and, and, and addressing our concerns. It's just that, you know, the roof's a big deal and, and white roofs are, are difficult and expensive, added expense, I should say, then, but worth it, I think. And I just wanted to make sure that people weren't going to go, because of snow and things like that, usually flat roofs, there's the, the added weight. So, yeah, but otherwise, yeah, I like.
Are you planning on installing a central, central air?
Yes.
Okay, and are the outside units going to be on top or outside?
I think it's going to be up on the roof.
Okay, yeah, that's what's going.
Can you explain?
Then we're going to have a sprinkler system too.
The material that you're proposing for the cornice, like the outside face, it looks like it's vinyl siding all the way up. And it probably should have some different treatment, either a different color, a different material. Yeah, the upper band of the building. That's more of an aesthetic thing. And also, the windows look great. I just hope that you install them, you know, the same windows that are pictured there. Two-over-twos. Or six-over-six, whatever, but with mullions.
Sarah, are you talking about, do you see my cursor?
Yeah, yeah.
You're talking about this? Like what material will that be, or?
Well, see, that's actually a clearer drawing than the other side. It just looked like it was vinyl sided all the way up. Yeah, the renderings give it more character. So the way it shows in the renderings, I would, that is a guide, not the exterior elevation.
I have a quick question for you in regards to the drainage of the building from, from, where, where are your drains located on this building?
Right now, it's on the middle.
Pardon?
Right now, it's on the middle of the roof.
Oh, okay, okay. Yep, yep, okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Questions, comments, motions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this plan as we see it, with the siding, with the bands that differentiate the different levels for the aesthetic point of view as to member, Board Member Sarah's point. But other than that, thank you again for listening and trying to make a plan that works and adds character to the building and the neighborhood. We appreciate that. Your, your conditions for this particular one are, your standard conditions is applicable. The petitioner must submit the following plans, which is a lighting plan with all lights compliant with the I D S A standards, rodent control plan, waste management plan. The occupants of the new third-floor units will be ineligible to participate in the city's on-street parking sticker program. As per Menee's request, we will need a white roof on the upper, on the, on the very top to help with light, light and heat reflection. And I think that's it.
I'll second.
Just to, like to clarify, when you refer to the drawings, that, that you refer to the 3D drawing that we see here for the cornice detailing, the banding, and the windows.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed.
And so the zoning board meeting will be Tuesday, December ninth, six P M. Here. Six, sorry.
Thank you. Next is case twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one at two seventy-one Washington Avenue. Petitioner is J C G Investments LLC, and here they are.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Anthony Rossi, on behalf of the petitioner. I do have the manager of the LLC, James, here. If I may present, this is basically an existing structure consisting of a very large two-family, existing over nine bedrooms. He could have applied just for an A D U unit by law, and I'll go through the zoning process. But I, basically, I guess there's some conflicts with appraisers when they evaluate a two-family with an A D U instead of a three-family. But everything that's being done to convert this from a two to a three is basically done inside the structure. So if you look at the existing floor plan, the first floor is not changing. The second floor and third floor are going to be divided into two units. It'll have less bedrooms than what was existing in the structure because they're going to have now kitchens and bathrooms on each floor. As far as everything that's being done, it's all being done inside the building. Of course, the building now would have to be building compliant or would require a sprinkler system and adjustable fire alarm system, which it currently does not have. As far as the exterior of the system, the building, if you look at the rear, it says proposed deck. That's actually an existing deck and stairwell that goes out in the back, but it's structurally not sound. And my client just acquired the property. He's renovating the whole building. And that will be just a new structurally sound stairwell. And same thing goes for the front. So he's not changing anything as far as the exterior, other than making it more building compliant and safe for his future tenants. And that's all that's, and there's no parking that's with this property. It's landlocked. So the relief that's being sought, it's just being sought based on the dimensional reg requirements. That's it. I'll gladly listen to the board for any comments.
Question about the deck. So the back deck is going to occupy the same footprint as the deck that's there right now?
Nothing is changing. It's just going to be with footings and be seven-eleven stairs compliant. It's just not compliant.
So just cleaning, making it so it's usable, but replacing?
Bring a new deck that sits in the same footprint.
Alright, and the front steps too, same thing, just kind of cleaning up what's there?
Exactly.
Okay.
Can you clarify, is Washington Ave at the top of the page there for the buildings?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Is Washington Ave?
It's at the bottom of the page, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the existing stair is the one at the rear?
Yeah, they're both, both existing. We're just going to renovate both stairs.
They're both in the same footprint, but just made to code?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, the, the front stairs just go straight down, so it looks by this, you are planning to change the front stairwell a little bit.
James?
Yeah, there's, there's been some, James Catus, I'm the manager of J C G Investments. There's been some discussion because it's a pretty steep elevation. If you're familiar with Washington Ave, and there was kind of a way that the engineer and the property survey had designed it to have a little bit less steps on that straight run. So the steps are shown in a slightly new spot. The building department is open because of accessibility issues and the sidewalk and things of that nature, but they're, they're in agreement that someone's doing something with the steps because every step is different. Some are eight, some are ten, some are six, some are nine. It's a complete safety hazard. So they're really happy to see, you know, someone responsible taking over this. The property was in foreclosure. It was an extreme disrepair, and it's definitely a good thing that, that, that we have some capable hands here to get this place back and looking a lot better, so.
Agreed. It's a beautiful property. Would really like to see it remain largely as it sits right now. Seeing the step layout that exists right there now, how many steps up is that? Is that, you know, it's like a good fifteen, twenty steps?
I want to say it's twenty-six steps to the front door.
And that's all one unbroken flight, no landings?
Yeah, correct.
Alright, and is there, in that design that you just showed us a second ago, and is that something that's designed to sort of ameliorate that straight drop from the front door down?
Exactly.
And that's, you know, is, are you flexible on that layout, such as it is? I mean, if, you know, as, as the project progresses, you know, does it need to be that, or is there any other?
It doesn't, it doesn't need to be that, but it's, you know, it's just something to kind of break it up a little bit. It feels like you're on an escalator going up to the front door, and, you know, obviously, if you're coming home from Market Basket and you've got a whole bunch of bundles.
Right.
You know, that's a pretty hefty leg workout.
Is there no other access to the building from the street, other than that front steps?
Just the front steps.
Just the front steps, okay.
And I will note, by code, you can't make a run that's over twelve feet and make it straight run. This was built years ago. You're supposed to stop to a landing at that point, and then you start your run again. That's, that's how you're supposed to. But if he, if he did a drop in the middle here, you wouldn't reach the structure.
Wouldn't get there, right.
Correct.
I'm going to be perfectly honest. I think it's a travesty to take the detailing away. I mean, there's so few historic buildings in Chelsea, and to see the modellings gone, the front doors gone, the paired columns, and, you know, are indicative of that Second Empire style. You've stripped all the charm out of it.
It's, it was rotted out. I mean, this woman who owned this property, she was in complete financial disrepair. I mean, she had every bedroom with a padlock. It was, drugs were involved. I went through a treacherous eviction to basically get rid of, rid of an illegal rooming house here. And, I mean, she rotted out the whole entire property between the fascia all at the top. The amount of money that we spent here to try to just get this place to be safe has been extreme. And that's why, you know, if you're familiar with driving by on that road, it's been empty for a long time because of the extreme amount of work that's gone into it. But if she didn't let it go to shambles, and it didn't get rotted out, and there wasn't rodents and skunks and this, that, and every other animal in there, rats, you know, I would have loved to keep it and try to do something with it. But it was a hair away from being a tear down this place. I mean, structurally, structurally not sound. You know, we've, we've done a lot to make it at least safe. I mean, structurally, structurally not sound, you know, we've, we've done a lot to make it at least safe and structurally sound, so. It's, it's, it's a, this is a heavy lift, uh, this, this property.
Even still, it looks like there's some, still some potential left in it, you know, as, uh, you know, I don't know how current those pictures are, but, you know, would you be open to, you know, as you progress with the project, cleaning, you know, maybe adding a little bit more of a, you know, a, a less generic-looking front door and maybe trying to do something to do with the columns, at least on the front landing, to sort of rejuvenate that style?
Yeah, you know, we were trying to, you know, do something with the columns and stuff, but the front door was kind of there for temporary. It was kind of a temporary thing to get it safe, and the fire department was out there a number of times, people would go in there and do drugs, and they would go in there and sleep, and they would go in there and, so it became really like more of a, guys, hey, just get a door in here that's bulletproof and lock shot, that no one's going to come in here and do drugs at night, and no one's going to come in here and camp out and do illegal substances.
Yes.
So, you know, it's, the, the whole porch was rotted out, all the columns were rotted out, everything was rotted out. And the only way you can really fix rot is by tearing it all apart and trying to start over.
And as you do so, would you be willing to kind of rebuild it in a way that's...
Yeah, I'd be trying to, you know, try to, you know, I'd be very happy to try to get, you know, some of the details of the columns with moldings on the, on the posts back, you know, and try to do something with that, but all that comes down to those steps.
Yep.
Because where the porch comes into play and how the steps connect all relates to the front door.
Absolutely, sure would love to see you rejuvenate this and, and applause for, you know, rehabbing the property, I understand what you're dealing with.
I don't think I knew what I was getting myself into when I bought this place, and it's, it's been a, it's been a roller coaster, so.
Very much appreciate the effort.
Yeah, and I'm glad to hear the story on that because I, I can't tell you how bitterly disappointed I was to see that facade disappear for this new one. So certainly, I think from, from a planning standpoint, I would love to see you look at the buildings in your neighborhood, do your best to create some sort of balance and design as best you can within your, your financial ability to give it back some character. We understand it's never going to look like the old one, but just to kind of mimic and incorporate some architectural detail would be certainly go a long way to helping that building kind of get into its new phase of life that you're giving it back. And just to, you know, think about it for not just this investment, but for the long term. You know, if you, if you can, that would be, we would highly encourage you to do that. And then I'm assuming you had to gut the property, right, so this is...
Yeah, there's nothing left of it, it's a complete shell.
Okay.
It was, it was a, a finger away from just trying to...
Yep. Okay, so then everything on here is basically fresh, fresh everything, right? Fresh floors, fresh, okay.
And looking to the door, that door, I'm not sure if you caught it, that was just a temporary door, just...
Safe.
Do you have the original door?
I don't, the, the problem is it didn't lock. So like if the people were walking by and they saw an empty house, they would kick the door, and, um, the gentleman at ISD Inspection Services would call and say, hey, the front door's open. Why isn't the property locked? And I'm like, I didn't, I didn't, it was locked when I left. And then it got to a point where, you know, you had to put two-by-fours on the back of that front door where somebody would kick it in, and they broke the jam, they broke the locking mechanism, and like, you know, you'd go in there and find needles. I mean, it was like mind-blowing, you'd find underwear, you'd find all kinds of different things that you'd walk into. But no, I, I don't think I have the door, and the people that kind of roam the streets, if you want to use those words, those are the people that really destroyed it. It wasn't me, so I couldn't get the place to lock it. I finally said to the inspectional, inspectional services guy, he's like, I don't care what you do, just put a door in there so that something's there so that it can be safe.
But we can look at you, a white door.
Very easy to come by, the salvaged door, if you don't have the, the actual door...
We could look for, I don't think you do glass on today's code. You can't because it has to be a 90-minute door, because it's going to be a three-family. But you can look to a door with that same type of style and molding for the front.
Gentlemen, have you considered trying to, in order to reach compliance for your stairs? Is some sort of terracing for that front area so that you can build out your stairs in, in a way that works for you? Now that you basically have a fresh slate over here?
Well, we've, we were trying to, you know, we were trying to find a way to make the stairs work to try to keep them the way they are by kind of cutting them at first and kind of like taking them apart, because there's some attributes where they feel really strong, and then there's other parts where I say, just start over and redo it. But, um, you know, I think that maybe if we, you know, tried to move it over to the right and, and get it that way, obviously, winter's coming and, you know, it's just the ground's frozen and things of that nature, so I don't know if the stairs are going to happen now or next spring, but, you know, I, I think that like, to be honest with you, um, this is the investment that's going to run me broke. And if I keep spending money on this thing, I'll literally, it's going to probably sit like this and keep looking like this because, you know, between what I paid for it and how much I have into it, which obviously is not, you, you know, I'm into this, it's, I'm going to get, I'll become broke. I won't have, I won't have the means to finish the, the project, so. You know, this is a huge property that needs an exorbitant amount of work, and I've done everything in my means to try to get it to a point where I can try to at least lose something and at least get the project done, so. It's a...
What's your drop from, from the door to the, basically to the street level? What's your, what's your elevation drop? Is it 30 feet? Is it 15 feet?
It's, it's more than 30 feet.
And what's your grade?
26 to 30 feet.
Okay, so it's about 30 feet? Yep.
There was some calculations, which we've had a number of people try to even design the stairs, we had a structural engineer design a new set of stairs, and to do the math equation on that is, is, uh, you need a PhD from Harvard to figure it out, between the angles, the street position and everything else, and...
Yep.
It's, it's, it's definitely, uh, it's quite the calculation in trying to make the stairs work. And I think when they had the angle, they said, maybe if we break it up a little bit, like you said, the cold roof.
Terraces, I think, might be your, your answer to that, yep, yeah.
It's got to be at least 22 feet if you have that many steps, because they're probably 711 runs.
Did you look at having the top stairs off to one side or the other, and then a terrace before the other, um, row, or run of stairs? So one down to, say, four feet off the ground, which is, you know, grade at the top.
So there's a recovery center next door, and they have a very similar set of stairs, and the way that we tried to, uh, make our stairs was very similar to how they have their stairs. And clearly, within the last 15 to 20 years, they had the stairs done because it's a safety thing if someone comes out in a storm. And I can tell you that, uh, the best way that you can make those stairs is the way that the plan was presented. Because we spent months trying to figure out how many steps to break it up, um, you know, to try to make it possibly work. But it's, it's, uh, you know, basically the number of steps is trying to get it to a point where it becomes flat, and then it, when it becomes flat, then you would kind of pick up the middle. And I think you would probably need some sort of like three or four-foot stone wall to maybe beautify it, but until you get out in the field and you do those things, yeah, it's kind of like you have to really get into this and get into the thick of it to, uh, to the property to the right of it, is the one that has the newer set of steps. Yeah, that's a huge run, that's, that's another escalator. But they have a little landing there, right where the cursor is to the left?
And that's kind of what I was thinking, where you have, you have a series of steps, you have a small landing, then you have another series, and it breaks up that property so that you can, you can, hopefully it's not outrageously expensive, you can still get down that grade. You know, and you could, you could potentially zigzag that to get down that grade and still have it work for you.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not an architect, but I can say that, you know, I try to do my best that I could possibly do with, you know, registered design professionals to try to make something that's appealing, that's safe, and that's practical. Uh, you know, if, if you look at the height of that one next door, it's actually a lot, it's a lot lower grade. And the problem is, I don't know when they built it, but when you're doing a commercial building, you got to do 711 steps, and you got to do 42-inch landing by code. To be, yeah, even though you still have to do it, the rail for the handicap coming up, and even though it's really never going to be used for that, but you're supposed to do a dual rail on it.
Okay, can you, um, go back to the plan of the stairs, the proposed stairs, yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I think that's a perfectly legitimate plan, and, and it's kind of buried in the landscape, right?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Are you, um, is it, is it going to be rental, and do you plan, how, how many people do you anticipate living in this building?
I don't think anything's going to be good deal with how much money I spend, but, you know, like I said, it's just, I'm trying to get the project done. It's kind of sat there for a little bit between, like I said, the illegal rooming houses and Chelsea District Court, the eviction. It was, this has been a real heavy, uh, it was, property was in complete disrepair foreclosure.
I think she's asking, you're going to rent, you're not doing condos?
No, not condos, yeah, they're going to be for, you know, hopefully working-class people that can utilize public transportation, and that can benefit from a nice view of the city. There are some limited views with the, of the city from there, and they'll have a nice renovated, beautiful, sparkling, clean apartment that doesn't have any, hopefully, issues when they move in.
I, I can represent to the board that Jimmy did a project, um, right around the corner from me in Gloucester. It's probably the nicest four, uh, three-bedroom apartment rentals I've ever seen. So he takes pride when he builds them, he builds them himself, he doesn't sub it out, he does the work himself, and they're beautiful projects. So I, I expect this to be a really nice project.
I've got a question about drainage. So, I, I understand the concerns of the, of the aesthetics of the building, I, I appreciate, what about drainage? That's a big hill, so where...
When you say drainage, I don't know what you mean.
When it rains, where's water, drain, where's all the water? I mean, I can't figure that out on the plan.
I mean, they're, they're not touching the footprint, they're just going to put existing downspouts to go back where they were, and it would go back into the same manner that it's been done for probably 100 years. They're not doing a cul-de-sac, they're not touching the structure, it's only going to be on the inside, so...
So the stairs don't become like one big giant iceberg during the winter?
No, I mean, they shouldn't because they all, they're all pitched, they come down. I mean, you still got to, you still got to, if, if it snows and it rains and ice, you still got to put salt down and so forth.
Okay, and is there a way to enter the building through the back?
Yes.
Okay. So, for all tenants?
For all tenants.
Okay. And then, um, uh, what was the last one to ask? Was, um, uh, landscaping? Have I, have you submitted a landscaping plan?
We've not done a landscaping plan on this, he's going to landscape it, it's, it's really more for the interior that we're dealing with now, just for the cut-up of the units.
And do you have a timetable when you think you might be able...
He wants to do this immediately.
Well, I understand, I understand the financial and the, and the stress of, of this, but do we have a timetable, like spring? Is that, is that what you're looking for?
No, yeah, so I, you know, I, you know, obviously, we're kind of ready to go on it. It was a little bit of a hurdle to get the instrument survey to design these steps. There was a little stone wall too on the front of the steps to kind of like accent it, but like this little, is like, I think, a decorative wall, and then the sides will also be probably veneered or decorative, but, you know, what, I want to kind of keep, try to put the full-court press on to get through with this because, you know, it's kind of looming over my head, and we've been in discussions, and we finally got together the plans and the architects and the teams. It's just, this was a heavy lift, um, you know, the main central staircase is all new and structural engineering stamps, it just, it was a lot of legwork to try to get it to this point, to be frank.
No, I, I, I appreciate that. What I'm, what I'm trying to get to is, if you, if we do the interior, can we put a contingency plan for the outside? Give you time to get some income, rest everybody, get the building to then...
Uh, no, he's going to landscape it before occupancy.
Right, but, but also that we can get it to be, um, more, uh, you know, like put shutters on, put, maybe put a porch on, uh...
We're not going to do shutters anyways, because the windows are facing on the...
But I'm just saying, if, if we, what I'm thinking is if we deal with in, in stages. So if the first stage is to get the interior done so that you can rent it, because that's the most important part. People tend to rent from the interior out, meaning the building is going to look, you know, it's, it's not like I am pay is going to be in there. So, um, if we, if, if we can put a contingency plan, and I don't know if we can, to say, finish the inside, rent it, and then let's go back to the design phase on the outside, and that we...
I don't even think you need to do that, I think you can make a condition that it's subject to design review, with John, which it does, which landscaping, it's a requirement. I, I know what Jimmy does, I don't think he's going to rent one unit until every little thing is done, landscaping, exterior, shutters. Am I wrong?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I have no objection to state that if put a condition, said this can't be occupied till design review and all scope of work and design review is completed. He's not, I know he won't rent it until everything is done.
Yes, but what I'm trying, I think what I'm trying to do is get to yes, to say, let's deal with the realities that, that it would, once the building is rented, fully rented and occupied, and the income comes in, and the, we, the pressure is a little bit off, not a lot off, but just a little bit off, then we could, um, put more, uh, conditions on the aesthetics for the building so that, because right now, it's, right now, if we want the, if we want to say, okay, we want those stairs to have a landing, and let's just say that costs $40,000. But if you do it the way it is right now, it's going to cost $25,000. So if we, and these are just numbers, I have no idea if these are accurate, but I'm saying is, if once the building is occupied, then the idea of the $40,000 renovation is not, I, I, I would not want to have him rip out something that is, what I'm saying is, let's try to do it in stages, let's try to do the interior work from the inside out, not the outside in. That is what I'm trying to do.
I'm struggling to understand the practicality of that, or even enforcing it.
I, once the, right now, the building, right now, the building is aesthetically challenging, but it is occupiable, you can move in. The building right now is a, is a, a white box, and right now, I assume the inside is totally gutted.
Correct.
So my proposal is, let's keep the white box for a year, whatever it takes, six months, eight months, build the interior, get the tenants in, and keep the white box there. As it's said, as challenging as it is, and then say, okay, now that you have the cash flow coming in, because we want to work with a, a reliable developer who does this good work, then everybody will be a little bit, you'll have a little bit more money, you won't be under the, because all I keep hearing from you is how challenging this project is. We don't, I want to take that little challenge away, and I also want to make the bill, because it is a beautiful building, there's lots of, you could put a veranda on it, you could, you could get, you could, and, but you can't do any of the things that we would like the building to be because you don't have the cash flow, right now.
It's not about the cash flow, I just forgot a big refinance to finish the building, it's not about that. Basically, no one's moving into this building until the stairs are done, that's step one.
Why?
ISD, ISD already told me that no, anyone moving in there until the stairs are done.
Okay, so if the stairs are, is, okay, so if the stairs is the obstacle, I, I apologize, then we can, I'm just saying, I want to keep, I don't want you to do anything to the white box. If you have to do the stairs, do the stairs to get occupancy. I want to get to what Sarah wants, and what I want is we want the building to look, and what you want, excuse me, I didn't mean to exclude you, you want the, we want the building to be aesthetically more pleasing. Let's think of it as a little bit, let's go to Gloucester, let's go to Marblehead, let's think of a little, little fisherman hut, let's think of those captains, that's what I want. It's, I want it to look like a little captain's house, let's bring Captain Hook, let's bring...
He's already said he's going to do landscaping, he's going to put the door on, and he's going to put shutter on, what more do you want?
I want a bigger budget for that.
We're not, it's, I just want to make it quick, I don't want, I don't want...
We can't control the budget, also, it's like terribly unclear, we can't say like aesthetically pleasing, we can't enforce it, it's arbitrary.
What I'm going to say is this...
Actually, Eric, this one is different because this is historically protected, so there's a process that takes place.
Yeah, and it's kind of...
And when someone purchases a property, they know that they have to meet these, they have to comply with these historic requirements. So that's the difference between this property and most of them that come before us.
And that's already baked into this.
Historic properties are endangered species in Chelsea.
That's already baked into this process, though, yes, because this is a historical, in a historic district, there's certain states that have to be met, yes.
Yeah, so, so just to clear some things up, so the property is an inventoried property on the state's Historic and Cultural Resources Inventory. So, it's not necessarily deemed a historic structure, but it has been inventoried, so that means there is some historic or architectural significance to it. Because of that, uh, you will have to go to the Historical Commission as part of the design review process, um, so...
Correct.
That will occur.
It seems to me that those issues will get sorted out in front of the Historical...
Of course, that's what I was going to say, we don't really have jurisdiction, they're going to decide how they want that to go, and with all those, I know he's probably frustrated.
But why are we going through design, why are we going before the Historic Commission after construction has already started? It's already been stripped of all of the detailing, so...
That's because I would, one, I would say our preservation policies aren't that strong, and ISD is, wasn't aware that this was a property that was inventoried on...
Correct, they issued, we got a permit...
Yeah.
To renovate it, they issued the permit, and only when, he was getting a permit to make it three units by right, he could do it because it's an ADU. And I advised him to go this process, just I thought it created more value, instead of saying a two-family with an additional ADU, even though by law now you don't have to rent to an in-law, what have not. But I, I know he's getting frustrated because he actually thinks, and I agree, it's actually a, a really pretty building, he reconstructed the whole man's side. He reconstructed the whole man's side. He's just not done with the front and the landscaping. But we'll go to historical, but I think historical are basically gonna state what, because it's not actually a landmarked historical building. They're gonna just state, okay, thank you, and I'm not gonna lie to you and tell you, he's gonna put shutters there. I know he has the intention of putting shutters. If there's a concern about shutters on the building, I have no objection to put a condition of shutters. This is subject to design review with John and landscaping and lighting. It's just like every condition it is. But he's not gonna make the same building you see there. It's just not happening because it's already done. I mean, he's not gonna go back and have people move in and just start doing construction on the exterior. Nobody does that. That's actually far less economical and it's gonna cause problems with tenants in the building. I don't wanna, I'm not trying to.
The issue with it being economical or not is you don't take on a historic property without the intention of restoring it. I mean, if, if you're surprised by all, you know, these expenses.
It's not a historical property. I just want to make it clear that it's not a landmark property.
Let's just call it a charming property that is historic, okay?
Can you hold the picture for a second?
You don't take on a property with, without intention of bringing it to its.
I, I agree. He should have tore it down because of the condition. It was, it was considered condemned, structurally not sound. He spent the money to go this route. If he probably had to do it again, probably would have ripped it down because the money he had to spend to do it. So now we're talking to somebody that I convinced to go through this process, that he didn't have to go through this process. He recreated the man's side roof. He's not done with the front entrance. He's not done with, with the pillars. I mean, look at, look at, look at the front, look at the top of the man's side. Look at what it was before. It's actually almost exactly the same as before with better detail. So the only difference is those two double windows before recessed in and the two double doors and the columns. And he's not done with that yet.
Okay, I understand. It's, it's been a frustrating process and I think we need to regard this as a cautionary tale so that this doesn't happen again with, um, one of our most prized pieces of architecture in Chelsea. We don't have too many of them. So I think we, um, next time this happens, we need to be, there needs to be some more oversight.
I, I actually want to speak to the owner and say, I commend you for trying to save a house. And I like the fact that you just didn't throw an extension on, that you're trying to keep this into a three family and make the numbers work. And because it's a gut job at this point, we can look at it to some extent as a blank slate. I do understand where Mimi's coming from on trying to give you time to create as much historical significance to the new building that you're working with. And obviously, that's probably not feasible within the realms of a building. But I think our ask for you as a board is just to do your best along with the historical commission to create something that is a true nod to the neighborhood, that in, that you put in as much architectural detail into the new plans as possible to make this a, a building that looks beautiful for another hundred years. I, I think that's kind of where we're going with this, right? And that you pay attention to.
That's all I was trying to do. I wasn't trying to say that you didn't, I do appreciate the fact you did save the building. I know exactly how much it would have cost to do this and, and not to tear it down. That was not my intention to say that because, um, the, um, that you, that, um, in the course of the renovations, you had to make some very difficult decisions. That's all. I was, I was just trying to say, there's ways to, you know.
If it wasn't all modern, I would, I would.
No, I, I'm not saying you wouldn't. I, I, that was never my intention that you were trying to do something that was, I, I, I totally understood your challenges. All I was just trying to do was to say, okay, let's put a little pause on it, see what we can do. But obviously, I am in the minority in that opinion, so we can go from there.
But I will, I will tell you, I heard the input from the board. He's committed to putting shutters on and looking at a wider door, possibly is seeping it away. We'd do a double door there and incorporate those columns. I, I, he will, he's gonna do the work on the outside anyways. He's not, so if that's a concern, we can make that in there as a condition and say, we'd like to see shutters on the exterior. You don't have objection to that. We'd like to see if he can put double doors in the front. We have no objection to that. We'd like to say if we can put the, uh, some type of decorated columns that's similar to what's there previously, we'll do that. We don't have any problem to do that before they occupy it, because he has no intention of having anybody moving in and then doing work while they're there. That's worse, because then they're gonna be hearing, hammering and shutters. That's just not gonna work.
I think we're all in agreement here. So thank you. Um, and then my only other comment is I really want to commend you for what you came to talk about, which is the interior design. Um, I love that. I think you did a really thoughtful job of doing that. I really appreciate the half baths and the linen closets. And I think you've made a really great use of the space and I just want to let you know that we appreciate that.
Can we look at, so that's first floor. Can we see the next two floors? Oh, so that's the third.
And it looks, if you go to the first floor, to the lobby, see, if you go to the first floor lobby, see, it does have a double door shown that's gonna be in the front. It's just that right now, that was temporary to close. So we're talking about it just, it's just to make sure nobody comes into the building. And then on top of it, if you know how those double doors work, especially when you're gonna put an intercom system, you're not gonna do that now and have someone destroy it when you're renovating the building. But he does have two double doors shown in the foyer. So we have the intention of doing that anyway. So we have no objection for those items that you want to see. He's gonna do. I've seen what Jimmy does. He does beautiful work. And just because it's in Chelsea and it's Gloucester, when he did it in Gloucester, it wasn't Gloucester like we know it today. It's now nicer Gloucester because everybody's going to Gloucester. But back then, it wasn't like that. So he intends to do that and I have no objection to make that a condition.
I think we're all agreeing that the image that we are seeing is not the final image and it's gonna be beautiful.
Yes.
Let's move on.
And design review is a standard condition and again, you will touch base with the historical commission as well.
I'd like to make a motion.
So I would like to, I would like to propose that we approve the project after all this.
Wait, Mimi, I'd like to make some amendments to this. Just, just so, are we finished on discussion group?
Yes.
Yes.
So then, here, here's the thought process on this. We would like to approve your petition. Uh, with standard conditions as applicable, uh, the petitioner must participate in design review with the Department of Permitting, Land Use, Planning, and with consideration of the comments from the Chelsea Historical Commission. And in addition to that, we would like the homeowner to consider the landscaping be a major part of that plan, the doors and the shutters and the historical, sorry, not historical, new details, new details on columns, porch and wood details be now included in your review process. Does that sound above?
Just to clarify that those are, um, per the original, you know, the, that, not necessarily what was on there before. I don't, I don't know what was on there before, but it should mimic the original building. Whether it had shutters or not.
Or tries to incorporate some sort of design features that are similar to your existing, um, what do we call this again? Victorian Regency? Second Empire Regency. The occupants of the new units will be ineligible to participate in the city's on-street parking sticker program. So those are our conditions. And that is the motion for us.
I second, I second the emotion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, homeowner.
Thank you. I promise you guys that when you drive by it, at the end, you'll be very happy with the way it looks.
And again, the zoning board meeting will be Tuesday, December ninth.
Yes.
Bring photos of Gloucester.
And finally, case twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two at one, two, three Washington Avenue. Petitioner is one twenty-three Washington Avenue LLC.
I'm a direct of butter to this property and I need to recuse myself from this consideration.
May I?
Please do.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Anthony Rossi, on behalf of the petitioner. I do have the architect of record, David Choi, to left me. And I do have Hector Angel, who's in the audience, who's the owner of the property. Hector is a developer in Chelsea and other cities and he takes, um, old properties and restores them. By way of background, this property is currently a funeral home with one residential unit above. Uh, the current proposal is to have one retail space on the ground level, which you can pretty much see on the plans, and nine residential units. The residential units, by way of background, are five three-bedroom units, sizes of about eight fifty to a thousand square feet, average is about nine hundred square feet. One studio, which is a pretty good sized studio, it's five hundred square feet, and three one-bedrooms exceeding five hundred and forty square feet. Um, as far as parking on the property, there's eleven proposed parking spaces that you'll see on the site plan. And the existing driving width is twenty-two feet. Um, the minimum required is twenty-four feet. We're not changing where that goes and so forth. And that's basically what you're seeing before. We worked with the, um, with John, um, in the planning board regarding what, what I would say, I, I probably, planning department in relation to what they want to see here in design-wise. So if you can show the, um, the, your site plan, oh, here it is, on the left side. So you can see the, the parking spaces to the right. So those are eleven nine-by-eighteen spots. We double-checked that, right, David? Okay, there was a question at the ZBA if there were not nine or not, but there are eleven nine, eleven spots. There's nine units and one retail. So we have, um, additional spots that we need. We don't expect, because there's a consisting of three one-bedrooms, one studio, so there's four spots there that may be even parked or not parked. We know about the residential sticker program and so forth. It's far less traffic than a funeral home and what's that and vehicles on it. We did more three bedrooms because when we worked with the city, they want to see more families and there's not enough three-bedroom units, which is why we designed it that way. We basically, we pulled the building closer to the street. So it has more of that appeal, as you can see. So it makes more of a retail component and so forth on it. And we did some bay designs on the, the windows going across and some Juliet balconies, um, on the sides, which you can see on that side profile. Yep, there you go, on it. And every, and we did a man's side roof. We tried to sort of incorporate towards in the neighborhood, three stories, that type of look with the bay windows and so forth, black windows. And you can see the balconies coming on that side of the building. Essentially, that's what's being proposed and, and I do want to tell the board that we were working with the city, with this design and what they wanted to see in better mix and a retail component there. As far as what a retail use is, because that was a question brought up by the ZBA, we don't know. I mean, it could be an office. Um, we don't know what, it's, as far as, you know, what type of tenant's gonna go there. Retail right now isn't ideal and today. Go ahead.
Who was pushing for retail?
When we worked with the city, they wanted to see, would, would, they wanted to see a retail component on the, on the ground level.
Okay, but if you had your druthers, would it be more residential? Is that trying to satisfy a need that the city had requested or?
I mean, when we worked the city, they wanted to see a retail component on that ground level.
Okay, that just surprises me of an abundance of available retail space.
I mean, I think the city would be fine to see retail or fine to see residential. Um, I don't think there's a hard.
So it's more you would tolerate retail, but you weren't requesting it? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I remember when, um, you know, Hector, David, uh, et cetera, the team kind of came to the city. We had a couple of different meetings. I don't recall like being very hard set on like having retail there. Um, there are retail uses along Washington Ave in that area, um, which can help make a more vibrant streetscape. But yeah, I, I mean, if retail's there and it works, then great, but I don't think there's a hard commitment or requirement for that.
And we did design it that way with that component and, and why that's important, could be brought the building forward. I think if you were gonna do more residential on that level, you may have not brought the buildings forward because now you, you really don't want a ground level unit with windows in it, if that makes sense, in the front.
It's not the retail use that I have an issue with. It's just how the aesthetic doesn't fit in. It's just too slick for the neighborhood. Like the, the, um, first floor. Yeah, that, I mean.
There's another one previous to that. There's another, there's another view.
I just think that's so incongruous with everything else going on around it. Not that, retail is a problem, but the, the retail in the neighborhood.
We can change the aesthetic if there's, if there's something you'd want to see differently and just sort of keep the same look of the upper floors and just have a door, um, for, for the retail space. And that's easy enough to be done. But that's something that this board wants to see.
Okay, and just one other thing, the massing, aside from the retail, the massing is very appropriate. It's just the way that it's, um, clad. It looks like it's trying to be a mansard when it's not. So I'd prefer to see a consistent material, um, kind of like the project we saw earlier this evening with the cornice and the banding. Because that's, you know, I mean, if you were gonna make it a mansard, it should have the
Pitch.
Shape of a mansard.
That's fine. Whatever this, whatever this board wants to see, we, we have no problem with the aesthetic in the exterior. If that's the condition you want, we can certainly do that. And as far as, um, David, just correct me if I'm mistaken, but there's two entrances there. Is that for? For retail, right? So we certainly can incorporate almost the same type of bay design all the way down. If that's, you know, and that, if you want to keep that look going all the way down and just keep the two storefronts and with some hottie going across. If that's something that you want to see, we can sort of incorporate it all the way down to the ground. Right? Could you still do that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, we could have the bay come down and it could be, it's a little bit too far.
Yeah, I would just refer to some of the buildings around there and just, you know, mimic the, the original cladding. The building can just kind of disappear into the streetscape, which is what we'd all like to see.
So I have a couple of questions for you.
As long as it doesn't have those retail windows.
I apologize. Um, a couple of questions for you. If you, if you took out the retail, could you, um, would it allow you to put in more residential units and, uh, allow for more parking on this property?
I, I don't think, I think if you take out the retail, um, I don't think you want to put residential units sort of on the ground level. It'd make more sense, because this is right at street level.
Yes, but there's existing buildings with their, with, you know, people living in them right neck, right next door and the other one to your right a bit.
I think if you go ground construction, you try not to put anybody at sort of right in the front. See, those other ones sort of have steps. I see the one left next door that you mentioned, but if you look at all these, they sort of step up, you know, they, they, they're walk-ups, you know. We don't have a walk-up here. And I just, I think it's just so close to the street. That's the only one I can see is sort of one to the left, you see?
But you also mentioned that your setback could be a little further as well. So I mean, my, my question to you is how beneficial is it to have more residential and no retail in this particular circumstance?
Or alternatively, slightly larger units? Because some of these seem awfully small to me.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think my client, I can't speak to him, probably be more inclined to make larger units on what's there than retail and keep it. And that number, yeah, something to that effect is, we have no objection of doing it that way. So that's, that's fine. We have no objection of removing the retail and incorporated design that's slable all the way through with a residential entrance and just changing the unit dimensions in the same footprint to incorporate that retail portion. That's fine. And then, then if that's the case, I would think that, first of all, that brick wall is fake. I mean, that's there now, that little knee wall. That won't be there later on. I just want to make sure everyone understands that. So I don't want you to think that this was a fixture. So we could almost create a sort of like an entrance to the front, you know, with, you know, higher windows than all the way going to the ground.
Your bays and just add residential and add more parking would be, would be my wish for this property.
And at that point, we would have eleven parking spaces for nine units.
I would think that you want some privacy at the front since it is right at grade. So some sort of wall or shrubs to.
Yeah, well, we could certainly do that. I only brought up the wall because I don't want you to think we're building a building and leaving. building and leaving, and putting, leaving that little brick wall there, you know, that's all.
Well, can we look at the streetscape, just the building on the, both sides of it? Yeah, see, the massing of that, that front facade is perfectly harmless. So I think I would just take some cues from that, or the one on the left, but not try to be both.
Definitely don't want to do the left, but we can certainly, we could certainly landscape it with hollys on both sides, with a residential entrance and landscape, and you create a pathway for the front and screen it with hollys and, and, see, like, well, that's a little bit different, because you're stepping up, right, you're not, you're not going to be stepping up here, but, but you could, it'll be recessed back. I mean, none of these have really good landscaping, but what I usually do on my entrances is we create, like, a, a natural holly path, I'm not sure if this board's familiar with hollys, almost like boxwoods, and go all the way to the entrance, and then you have green patches on the side of it with a nice pavers going to the front door. You know, or brick pavers to go with the historical presence of Chelsea, because a lot of the pavers in Chelsea are brick. But we have no problem making those conditions, removing the retail, and making the, those units on the ground level larger.
I have a question for you, were you required to incorporate the old building into the new? Was that part of?
We, we did, I think we are keeping.
No, I, I know you are according to the plans, but
Yes.
Were you required to keep that?
No, no, it just, cost-wise
Does it make sense to keep the building?
It was, cost-wise, it made more sense. The biggest, I build a lot of construction ground up, and the biggest expense when you're, when you're doing construction is actually site work, is bringing, digging your foundations and so forth. Like, anybody who takes an existing building, you can call 20 electricians, 20 plumbers in there, but when you try to do site work, there's only like one or two people, and it's very difficult to do that, especially when you're dealing with an urban residential site. So you want to limit as much of that as possible, if you can. Sorry.
Okay, so I got questions, like, I understand what we're talking about the outside, but these apartments are incredibly small. So you have a 851-square-foot three-bedroom apartment, you, you have a 540-square-foot apartment with an office, which is basically a euphemism for bedroom in Chelsea, that is, they are, 554 is an incredibly small space. So I think you're putting, so, I'm
Can I, I'm sorry, can we?
So there's, in, in these four plans, there's sometimes you list the square footage of the whole unit, and sometimes you mysteriously do not.
So I just want to let you know.
540 feet is an incredibly small unit.
But believe, I want to, I know you don't believe this, but everything you see that Fairfield built in Gray Star, those new projects, the average one-bedroom that they built, it's, they're all this, almost every of them doing the same. An average one-bedroom is
And, and Richard Nixon won 49 states, so I don't really care.
No, but
So I, it's, that's, that argument is
It's not even an argument, I build 400 units a year, and I, my average one-bedroom is 550 square feet.
Right, but that's, congratulations, but that is not, that still doesn't mean that 540s, there were closets bigger than, my, my walk-in freezer is 650 square feet, it's bigger than that apartment. And I run two ice cream stores out of that, so I know how to build stuff, so, some stuff, I'm not very handy, I admit, but it, these, I think some of these units are incredibly tiny, and I need, since there's so much work, information flowing around and new design information, I would, my proposal is to give you a continuancy and you guys come back, because if you're going to get rid of the retail, that's a whole different ballpark. I can't, in good conscience, even fathom. I'm actually for the retail, because I think it would be nice to have something in that, there's lots of different things you could do for retail in there, but I get why, it's, that's not a hill I'm willing to, to die on, but I'm willing to say that those apartments are way too small for how many bedrooms you put in there.
Yeah, also, talking about closets, I don't see any on this, on this plan, so we should probably get some closets on there.
Just so you know, like, when they show bedrooms, and I can show you the dimensions, a large bedroom is 14 by 14, which is 160 square feet, so, and a large living room is 14 by 14, which is 160 square feet, a bathroom is 8 by 6, a kitchen is 12 by 10, that's still under 500 square feet, and that's every apartment that you see in multifamilies in Chelsea, other than when you add a bedroom, you get another one that's 12 by 12, 14 by 14. But what I'm going to do is, I'm going to make them do dimensional regs on the next one. So when you see it, it's not me, it's 99% of the construction that's built. So when they say 819 for, 851, for that, when you see the dimensions of the rooms, they don't show a closet, because these are conceptual designs, but there's going to be a closet in the room. So I could take the extra step and do it one better, and say, we'll show you a standard one-bedroom, and say, here's a one-bedroom, here's a two-bedroom, here's a three-bedroom, right? 12 by 15 with a closet, living room, 12 by 16 with a kitchen. I can show that dimensional in there, but I'm not creating this, this is something that's been built the last 30 years in this manner. I mean, you can make 20 by 20 bedrooms, I guess, but I don't think you're building a 400-square-foot, you know, room for a bedroom.
I think it would be helpful to see the dimensions and the closets on, on the plans.
Yeah.
I also have some concerns about Unit 3 and Unit 7, don't seem to have any windows in the living and kitchen area, it's entirely internal, am I reading that correctly?
No, it's hard to see, because, you see the, right here?
Oh, yeah.
It just that it's a
Well, sure, those are in the bedroom and the office, but the actual living kitchen area, because that, assuming that that yellow corridor space is on the same level.
So, Building 3, sorry, Building 3.
Yeah.
So, so this is the window.
In the office and in the bedroom, and in the kitchen and living room.
And here, those aren't, those aren't what was there, are they?
Those are, to me, that looks like, that's interior.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Because that's a corridor.
That's why we have an office, and you could actually get, you could close up an office.
Or you could take out the wall from the office, if you, it's not open. You need, you need 8% light for a kitchen or living room, but we can certainly take the office out and just have one window going into the, into that space. But what floor is this on, just so I can see, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so Unit 3 on the second floor, and also Unit 7 on the third floor, they would
Could, could I see the first floor, I'm sorry, because I want to see what we have on the first floor? Is that the, with the, with the retail?
With the residential.
Can we go to the proposed plan, sorry? Okay, here's proposed, right? This is proposed right here? Okay, sorry, did I touch something, or?
That's just me, I'm trying to zoom in, so everyone can see.
So, David, educate me, but I can't see, so there's a retail. David, what's
There's another retail, so there
Also, sorry, David, could, could one of you just grab the, that mic?
Yeah, I'm just trying to see what's there, so.
Yeah, so, as you can see, this is the footprint of the existing funeral home, this is their best of view. Right? So this is their existing, this is the existing bay window of the funeral home. All of this, from this point back, is existing.
Yeah, David, can you scroll where you want to be, proposed, sorry.
Yeah, so this and this in front, retail one, retail two, are being proposed.
Okay, so I just want, I want to ask the board, am I showing a plan with retail or without? Because I can't do a design without knowing what I'm going to come back for, so, I know you want a retail, but I got other members
Well, let's take a, let's take a, let's take a survey, I mean, I'm for, I'm for more residential and no retail. Board members?
I'm for retail.
I have no objection to retail.
Okay, Mimi wants retail, right?
I think I want retail.
Tuck, what do you want? Do you want retail or resi, more residential in this building?
Retail.
Retail, okay. So then the retail has it.
Well, I think you're going to need to notify everyone in the immediate area, and I think you're probably going to get some pushback, but, you know, whatever the city wants to see, I, I will support.
We, we, again, we did not require seeing retail. We're fine with
I think we have a housing crisis, that, that's where the demand is right now, and there's an awful lot of available retail space that hasn't leased, so that's just my logic.
I can be a happy compromise, and I can talk to my client, but if we, if we can zoom that little bit down, smaller, a little bit smaller. Okay, so, see how you have a, David, there's no apartment behind this part, right?
Neither is where
Only here, right there. So what I could do is this, I can incorporate, let's say, retail two, and make that into, like, a larger three-bedroom unit, hypothetically, right? Because there's still a second retail on the left-hand side, maybe get rid of one of the retails, still do the bay windows, the whole design that we all talked about, and then, and just keep the left side as one retail unit, instead of having two large retail units, and make that studio into essentially probably a large three-bedroom. And go to the upper floor, or, or, I apologize, I can maybe, that's probably, that's actually, no, that's probably, yeah, I'll reverse it. So you have 2,400 square feet, what I would do is I'd make those into two units that are large 1,200-square-foot, I'll give you the bigger units, the three bedrooms, right? Now we're going to get rid of that studio, that's there now, and go to the other one bedrooms that are smaller, and we'll make that a larger unit to the ones next to it. So we'll, we'll make up the one unit and change two studios and make them into now three-bedroom units, the studio and one bedrooms, and we can make them larger units. So essentially, we still have nine units, but now we're going to have larger units and with only one smaller retail space of 1,200 square feet.
Fair compromise.
I just am concerned about the type of retail that would be avail, allowable as of right, that's getting into a whole nother ballgame.
They would have to go to licensing, so anybody who goes and tries to put a use there, they would be subject to licensing anyways, because any decent retailer is going to probably require a licensing.
Yeah, and this is in R2 district, so I actually don't believe any retail is allowed, like, by right. So, that, that's why, if you look at the department report I, I gave you guys, they would need a special permit for, to go from one non-conform use to another to allow for
So they would go back for, for board anyways. But as far as design, I have no problem tableing it and redesigning it, but I just want to know what I'm doing, you know? So I think I got input that we want to get rid of some of these smaller one-beds and, and studios, and I'll try to limit those, and maybe it might be only one, and make the rest of them into twos and threes, incorporate that larger retail component and have bigger units and a smaller portion of the retail.
Yeah, aesthetically, it shouldn't
I'll make the aesthetic match what's above.
It shouldn't look like a commercial building, the way it does with the glazing.
I'm going to do what we talked, I'm going to do what we talked about, I'm going to carry the bays and so forth, and work on that man's side, maybe a little bit better too, if we're going to keep it, you know?
And just for architect, I have a question for you in regards to the older house that you're incorporating into the newer building. Is there a way on the newer upper design on the top level to make that, the pitch on the side of that upper level slanting, so that it works a little bit better with the existing mansard roof that you're incorporating? Do you understand what I'm, what I'm, where I'm going with that?
She wants a real, a more real manside roof, that's
Well, it, it, I, I know it's, I know how expensive it is to put in a mansard, but that the, the new part of the addition be sloping as well on the side, on the upper side, on the third floor side.
Yeah, you're talking in the, in the front of the building, correct?
Yeah, no, on the third floor of the side, so that it, it is more harmonious with the, with the, with the back part. Does that make sense?
Yes.
David, David, you yelled at something. I know, I know, I build manside roofs.
So, yes, that's completely plausible, we could take the geometry of the existing mansard of the existing building and extend that forward, be cons, yeah, and be consistent, right?
My more architect, the, the, to
Right, and we could also take the roof, the hip roof on top, and also extend that, because without that, it, it would, it would, yeah, it would not be the same architectural language, right?
It's actually easier to do it now, because it's going to be new construction, so it, believe it or not, the cost wouldn't change, as long as you have the design set like that.
If that's possible, that would definitely help
Yeah, we could do that.
Put aesthetics on this building.
Okay.
That upper-left existing looks very handsome, so.
Yeah, we'll do that.
So let's propose this thing. So I propose we give these guys a continuance, do you want, next month, or do you want it to go into
Yeah, we can do it next month.
Okay. I, I propose that we give a continuance to this project with our concerns and see what they come back with.
And the, the December planning board meeting is Tuesday, December 16th.
And I would ask, and I can send a letter and wave constructor approval, that the ZBA next meeting, on the 9th, we table it, because we want to have a recommendation before this board, so we go
Yeah, yeah, the, the planning board has two things they need to do, send a recommendation to the zoning board for the special permit, and then do a major site plan review. So are you all, are you trying to continue both of those decisions? Okay, so then
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and I would ask that the ZBA meeting, we table that until we get the recommendation.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I, I know what everybody wants, we'll, we'll make it work, and I'll still give the detail with the dimensions and the closets, I promise. Thank you.
So, so that's my proposal, I propose we give a continuance for the major site plan and for the, I'm motioning again, if there's such a word.
I'll second it.
Made in, motion made and seconded, to continue. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you to the board, and everyone have a happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Does anyone here still need the interpreter? No, all right, I'm going to go sign them out, and then we'll grab Nick, and then do the next point.
And we also put in recognition that the first floor, connected to, most spaces are combined into a club, like, heck no.
Okay, the next order of business is the zoning amendment discussion, and I'll let my capable assistant hear.
Yes, so we have a zoning amendment before us tonight. It is essentially proposing updates to our residential one district, officially, it is proposing amendments to the table of dimensional regulations and the table of principal use regulations. So, here's kind of the language of it, I do have another slide that shows it in kind of table format, which might be a bit easier to read. So, really what this amendment is trying to do is reduce the required minimum lot area, a minimum lot area per unit in the R1 district, from 7,500 square feet and 3,500 square feet per unit to 5,000 square feet and 3,000 square feet per unit. It is also proposing to allow three-family dwellings in the R1 district by special permit. So, this is it in table format, which might be a little bit easier to understand. So our current regulations are on the left, we require 7,500 square feet as the minimum lot size requirement in the R1 district, and for 3,500 square feet per dwelling unit. And we also do not allow any three-family dwellings in the R1 district. So, basically what that means, a single-family home trying to be built in the R1 district would need a lot size no less than 7,500 square feet, or else it will have to come before the board to require a variance relief. A two-family home would require 7,500 square feet still under these current regulations, even though it would meet the minimum lot requirement, or minimum lot size per unit requirement, which would be 7,000 square feet. Under the new regulations, so, basically, a single-family home trying to be built in the R1 district, under these new regulations, would require a 5,000-square-foot home, a two-family unit would require a 6,000-square-foot lot, and if someone were to come in to try and build a three-family, they would have to seek a special permit for that use, and would technically require a 9,000-square-foot lot to build that three-family unit by right. Of course, they would still need to get the special permit for the use, but, yeah, they would need a 9,000-square-foot minimum lot size.
Well, how would this impact the open space requirement, and I know there isn't yet a permeability requirement, but how do you see these things working in hand-in-hand? Because one gets bigger, the other gets smaller.
Yeah, I mean, Yeah, I mean, I, I can go through, I kind of have some like general considerations around like maintaining larger lot sizes versus reducing, um, lot sizes. But generally, like, larger lot size requirements are intended to ensure that there are, is space for open space, there's, you know, area for parking, et cetera. So, so yeah, let me, I'll keep going through the presentation, but yeah, do you have a question?
Can I ask a question? So the current, uh, uh, current, uh, coverage is capped at 30%. Is that staying?
Yes, as of right now, the zoning amendment that's been proposed, um, uh, coming from, I believe, a, a counselor, so it's just reducing the lot, minimum lot size and minimum lot size per unit requirements and then proposing to allow three families in the R1 by special permit. Uh, so yes, like, open space requirements, lot coverage requirements aren't, are staying the same, um, which, uh, you know, I think are good points to possibly consider, you know, when making our decision, but.
Doesn't the practical impact of that mean that if someone wanted to have a three-family in there by special permit, by and large, they'd be looking for variances on these lot sizes anyways? Because I mean, we're looking at the outer limit of what's there right now being 7,500 square foot.
Yeah, it's all, it's automatically a, a, a thing that's in conflict with itself.
Yeah, like, you can.
This proposal is in conflict with itself.
Yeah, it seems incomplete, taken in, taken in light of the rest of the code.
Yep. There's also additional issues with, I mean, I think I, I just did one on a, on a, you know, spreadsheet was I just put, put an imaginary 5,000 square foot lot and I put a 3,000 square foot building on it. We automatically run into parking issues the minute we, we, if we build to the capacity that's proposed as we speak, never mind the three-family issue. But just even to do that, now we're into, in that district, if they didn't have parking, now they're back into the special permit game and then we're denying them their ability to get their, their residential parking because they would be before us for special. So we create additional problems with this that may not exist in this particular district currently. So, you know, that's, that's.
The other thing I'm wondering about too is how, you know, how many lots are there that are really 9,000 square feet still? I mean, Chelsea's pretty tight, so I'm wondering, you know, that's a pretty substantial size.
I also do want to clarify that the minimum lot size per dwelling unit is not meaning you need a 3,000 square foot structure. It's just meaning you need a.
Right, right, even still, the, the land itself.
Yeah, or you could have a 5,000 square foot lot and build a 1,000 square foot home if you wanted to. Right, right. No, I'm just, just saying, it's not requiring like the structure itself be 3,000 square foot per unit.
Sounds like you have many points to go over those, I'm sorry to distract.
No, no, you're fine, you're fine. So just, this are, these are the boundaries of the R1 district. It includes Prattville, uh, the Soldier's Home area, Mill Hill, Lower Broadway. And so here's some facts. So yeah, we did some digging, uh, we were able to access the parcel level data and dive into this a little bit. There are about 1,908 parcels in the R1 district. 1,006 of them are less than 5,000 square feet. 519 are between 5,000 square feet and 7,500 square feet. 383 are greater than or equal to 7,500 square feet. And there's only about 154 lots that are greater than or equal to 9,000 square feet. There are also 277 lots that currently have a three-family structure on it. Then, we're using the assessor's data and there are 167 vacant lots. They label it as vacant. We changed the language to unimproved because some of these vacant lots are like parks, like Washington Park is considered a vacant lot, but no one's building a home on Washington Park. The parking lot for Voke Park is considered a vacant lot. I don't think anyone is going to be building a home on that parking lot. So there's 167 unimproved lots. Only 17 of those are greater than or equal to 7,500 square feet and most of those 17 are parks, parking lots or just lots that are like unbuildable without significant like land remediation and investment. 27 are between 5,000 square feet and 7,500 square feet. Uh, we, we kind of looked at these unimproved or vacant lots just because, um, unless, you know, those can be the lots, maybe the first target a developer or someone might look to, to try and purchase and build on top of versus buying something and demolishing and, you know.
What's the story with the 277 lots that are already three families within this, within this district?
That, this is, this is very common, uh, amongst zoning where new zoning regulations get created and what's existing just gets grandfathered in. There are, as it shows, you know, three families throughout the R1 district. They definitely are not common. But I think I get into it into the slide. Yeah, just like the purpose of like the R1 district really is to be our low-density residential area, which does usually provide access to parking and open space on each lot.
So my question, I guess maybe the finer point on that is of those, of those three families that do exist in this district right now, are all of them grandfathered in from prior zoning or?
You know, that, that's actually a good question. We did not look into that. Oh, actually, actually, no, they almost all, they all are, yeah, thank you, Regina.
There's been no variances and none of them exist because of that?
Well, we just do not allow three families in the R1 district and Chelsea does not allow use variances. Technically, a three-family is considered a use. Uh, that's how we kind of categorize these things. So, all, any three-family that's existing right now was grandfathered in. We do not allow a use variance. So someone cannot currently come before the board and receive a permit to build a triple-decker or something in the R1.
Will, do you think that this will have a, you know, a positive impact on the, you know, the housing pressure or is this so miniscule that it's, it's not going to really make a difference?
Well, let me, uh, let me keep going here. But just also, the current ordinance as it's structured really does try to preserve the existing character. There's six out, we're on six out of 11, so we're almost done. Uh, the current ordinance is structured in a way that does try to preserve the existing character, um, of the neighborhoods that are designated as R1. And just something that's kind of interesting is in 2003, uh, the R1 dimensional table was updated to increase the minimum lot size from 5,000 to 7,500. This is before my time. Uh, I do not know why this was increased. I, I feel like I was talking with John, I don't think he knows why either or can't remember why, so, um, but just found that interesting that the, the minimum lot size was increased from 5,000 to 7,500 in 2003. Just some general considerations, you know, maintaining larger lot sizes does usually or generally ensure that there's more open space, uh, for, or on the lot and for the neighborhood, that there's, uh, more space for parking, you know, it reduces congestion, it can lead to higher property value, values like, you know, larger lots with like single or two-family homes. And in kind of ways, you can reduce the strain on public infrastructure in the sense of you don't have like 100 units, uh, straining a sewer or water line or something like that. Reducing lot sizes generally, again, uh, can create the opportunity for more relatively affordable housing. They can create more compact and walkable neighborhoods. They can encourage more diverse housing types, they can encourage kind of the infill development, of course, if we allow that. And then, in a sense, higher tax efficiency, if you have more parcels, possibly more buildings, you could get more tax revenue. These are all kind of generally theoretically. Then, just some more considerations, you know, retaining the 7,500 square foot minimum really restricts the number of lots that can be developed by right. Again, it preserves the neighborhood characteristics that are existing, which is something to consider, something to, you know, you know, do we value the current existing neighborhood character? And it also can limit the development of underutilized lots, uh, as well. And then, again, as I mentioned, most lots in the R1 just don't meet our current regulation. Uh, this amendment would allow 27% of the existing lots to meet the minimum lot size requirements and kind of like, to your point or question, Sarah, while it would allow the 27% of existing lots to meet the minimum lot size requirements if we were to reduce it, realistically, it's probably maybe removing the need for like one variance. Like, most likely, people will still need special permits for parking if they're not providing any, um, or, and also for the location of the parking. If they meet the minimum lot size, I'm, you know, maybe they don't meet the minimum lot size per unit. Um, they, we still have all these different dimensional regulations like side yard, front yard, rear yard setbacks, uh, open space, lot coverage, et cetera. Like, it makes it a little bit easier. But I, you know, it's, you, most projects will still require review from the board. You know, I think, uh, me and Adam, uh, were trying to think about like what projects like would have been by right and we were maybe thinking of the Grandview case that came before you guys. But I think Grandview, I think that lot was maybe a little under 5,000 square feet, so they would have still needed a variance. Nine Madison Ave, that was just before you guys. I believe they, they would have met the minimum lot size requirement if it was 5,000, but they were still under the minimum lot size per unit. So if they wanted to build a single family and met all the other dimensional regs, that could have been by right. But they wanted to come in with a two-family. And so, yeah, I put the variance criteria here just so, I, mostly this board deals with special permits or recommendations on special permits, but I think it's just, this is the criteria that projects would have to meet, um, to, you know, be granted variance relief. And they have to meet all four of these conditions. So something needs to be unique about the soil condition, shape or topography of the land or structure. The, there needs to be some sort of, uh, financial hardship or otherwise if the zoning regulations as constructed are applied. There needs to be, or, and if this relief is granted, there, uh, would be no detriment, substantial detriment to the public good. And granting this relief is not derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning. So like, when someone comes in and needs variance relief, which is what you need for any dimensional regulation, they need to meet all four of these criteria. So, kind of like, our discussion, I feel like should be centered around like, should new development have to meet the variance criteria as it relates to minimum lot size and minimum lot size per unit? What are the kind of trades, trade-offs of reducing lot size or maintaining lot size? And, and then also kind of how much impact will this have? So, so that's all I have for the presentation. You know, if the board members have comments or questions, uh, this is also a public hearing, so we'll also open it up to the public at some point, whatever.
The public.
Who represents the district?
Please bring it on to slide four, which actually shows the changes. Or is it four? Yep, that's the slide. So, that case that came in front of us in September, it was to construct, uh, two, three and two condos, each with its own parking spot. The plot size was like 5,400, coverage was 32%. The fact that we could construct six beds, four baths on 5,400 square feet kind of says something should change. I support dropping the minimum, uh, the, I'm sorry, the, uh, the minimum lot area from 75 to 5,000 as that is ample area for constructing a property.
I tend to agree with that because a lot of what we see come through here, and again, this would sort of expand the issue into an area where it's not common, but we're routinely approving relief and special permits from these minimum square footages. And I think that process would remain intact, if I'm hearing you right, Will, even if this were to pass, that process would remain intact, like all of these, there would still be a need for variances on these other issues.
Yeah, it's like.
And a lot of what we're talking about here is building up, not out, you know?
So, I, I think it would still be very rare for a project to come in fully by right. I think there will still most likely be some sort of zoning board, planning board review. However, like I mentioned, if Nine Madison Ave came before you, if they wanted, instead of doing the two-family, if they wanted to just build a single family and they had met all the other dimensional requirements, because they were meeting parking, they just wanted the special permit for the front yard parking to allow their tenants to have three cars parked, you know? They could have, if they removed that, they could have just done it by right. So there are cases where there, it might, you know, what is it, like, avoid review by the boards. But I realistically think this might only remove a variance or two.
I think to piggyback on, on Nick's point, I feel like when we see these come up, and my usual caveat, if I haven't been on the board for very long, I don't even think we talk about this. I mean, we, we get at it sort of obliquely when we talk about like, you know, is there enough open space and, you know, what are they doing with, you know, the landscaping and things like that? But at, I, I'm fairly certain that at no point in a meeting that I have really been at have we gotten into the nitty-gritty of like the square footage of the lot. And so it, you know, to my mind, if, if we're not talking about it, it's not important. And from that perspective, it does kind of make sense to me that we could reduce these without having a major impact.
Well, I, just real quick, I, I would say it still is important. I, I, again, I think the planning board, when you guys are doing your actual reviews, your jurisdiction is recommendations on special permits and major site plan reviews. So, that, I would say that's probably why you're not necessarily getting into the nitty-gritty of like variance relief and whatnot, because mainly you're focusing on the special permits and whether a building is fitting into the character of the neighborhood. General, uh, understandings or assessments of like massing and, you know, I, I do think you guys do consider lot size.
Yeah.
You know, many times you're like, oh, this is too big for this, so.
Yeah, I actually disagree. We consider lot size a lot, like how much it's going to be next, front and back, how much around. I am leaning more towards that, I, I think this is a big reduction. And, and if it was, I mean, from 35 to three, that's pretty reasonable, but 75 to five, that's a big, big jump, I think. And, and particularly in Prattville, which is a little, a little island on its own in Chelsea, as I like to say. So, um, you know, it's, it's got the cutest house, that little triangle house. Anyway, so I digress, but I, I think lot size is important, even though we are building up, I, it, I think we're, this is not a small feat, this is a big thing, even though, I know people will still come by the board, but this is one of those things like, uh, real estate developers' wet dream, let's just reduce the lot size and build where we want.
It is.
Well, so, this is like two separate conversations. I think the three-family structures by special permit opens up a ton of conversations. I'm personally for keeping character in Prattville, keeping everything small. I think we can totally keep character in Prattville, building properties on 5,000 square foot lots. That's ample space.
I don't, I mean, I think, I think, you know, that, that 2,000 square foot, if you get rid of, of 5,000, I mean, you're talking about getting rid of the parking. Basically, what you're talking about is getting rid of the parking. Because that's what, that's what you, that's what it's talking about. And though, I personally don't really care about parking and I understand everybody in America cares about parking and everybody thinks cars are going to go away in the next five years, I don't, you know, I get it, everybody's going to be on a little boat or a little thing, I get what people think's going to happen. I think they're delusional, but that's okay. But, um, I, you know, getting rid of a parking requirement is, you know, hard and open spaces is, is important. You've got to have a tree. If nothing else, you've got to have a tree. And you, you can't, you can't have a tree if the house is fourth, if the house is 3,500 square feet, you're not going to, where, where are the kids going to play? And I don't even have children and I don't, where, you know, where's the little swingset going to go? You know, so I think lot size is important. I, you know, I, my, you know, like I said, 35 to 3,000, I'm good for, but that second one, you know, and it's too big, it's.
What do you think would be a more appropriate number if we were to consider?
Maybe 7,000, maybe 65, 68, maybe? But you're, you know, it's, you know, if you're building a two-family, three fam-, I mean, I would like to see, nothing is more Bostonian than a triple-decker. Nothing is more Bostonian. But there's, how many triple-deckers are there in Prattville? Five? Seven, two, you know, so.
Well, that's, that's across the entire R1.
Yeah, that's across three pla-, so, you know, I'm not trying to, you know, isolate Prattville or making it feel bad or saying it's like a little bit of heaven.
And the waterfront.
I think living in, I think, I live in Chelsea, I love Chelsea, there's all parts of Chelsea and, and that's what makes it nice, but I, you know, it's, it's, I, that's my.
I'd like to just chime in for a few seconds on this. We already consider our, our lots that come before us on a case-by-case. This sort of eliminates some of it coming before us so that we don't even get to decide and we're not really even just talking about three families here. It's, it's two things at once. And on some levels, I feel that this proposal was in bad faith by one of our counselors who basically had mentioned that it's like if it has to happen in my neighborhood, then I want it in everybody else's neighborhood. And I think that's a bad faith. And I think that's a bad faith decision, only in the sense that it doesn't take into the fact that there should be different parts of the city that are used in different ways. And, you know, we just listened to our whole contingency from the Hill talk to us about the lungs of Chelsea, and we have so... You know what I mean? We've a lot of density in the center, and my argument is, is that I don't believe we should really consider just shoving a lot more density into the other ends of it. We're also going into a project where we're about to see the Chelsea Housing Authority down in the bottom end of Prattville put in a, anywhere around the 800 units mark in that area where the current Chelsea Housing Authority is going. And that will change the character of that neighborhood in terms of density, people accessing it, traffic, et cetera. So we have to think about all of that stuff, too. So, you know, and I think that there could potentially be two different things on the board, instead of it all wrapped into one. Like, we could potentially look at thinking about three families allowed back in R1, but not together necessarily, that the two pieces aren't, you know what I mean, that the language is just changed in terms of this as a zoning. So I'm not in favor of this one. Don't like the way it's written either.
Is it not proposing changes to the setbacks or gaps between structures on a lot?
No, this is purely just reducing the minimum lot size, the minimum lot size per unit, and proposing to allow three families by special permit in the R1 districts.
Can we have the councilman talk?
Can we have... What? Well, can we just, I mean, there's literally just two gentlemen here, I'd really like to hear what they have to say, be part of the discussion. Do we have to be this formal? That's my proposal. Tucker, get to open it up.
What's your proposal?
My proposal, let's open it up to the public, the two gentlemen who are here.
Oh.
And let's hear what they have to say.
You mean? I'm not gonna say that. City councillors can make a speech, a drop of it.
Yeah.
There is a time limit, though, remember that.
There is. So, look, I waited a long time to talk, and I usually don't come before you guys to, you know, I, when I was on the board, I didn't necessarily like city councillors coming up and telling me what to do. This is a little different, though. This whole proposal, I think, absolutely, like Regina said, is done in bad faith. And it... Because one councillor thinks it's unfair that his district has a different, you know, designation than other people's districts. And so, he's got this, you know, idea that everything has to be exactly the same, or else it's not fair. And that's just ridiculous. And the way he put this together is just, you know, I, look, I love the guy dearly, you know, but this is one of his kind of schemes that I think is just, you know, it's not well thought out. I think, I think if you were to recommend that the city coun... I mean, I'm gonna vote against it anyway, but, you know, I think that if it were to pass, you're gonna have an uproar among the public with people, you know, now who live in single-family homes, all of a sudden, you know, people are gonna wanna build, you know, everything. And, you know, if we just keep doing this, then, then a lot of the people that have lived here a long time, a lot of the people that really enjoy their neighborhoods, it was the, I was just at the zoning board the other night, speaking against the Nine Madison, which I know you guys approve or recommended to approve, but the neighbors were up in arms, and, and they didn't want it. And I'm telling you, this is, this is a bad, this is a bad proposal. Please don't recommend that we pass it. If you, if you, it'll be a lot easier to vote it down at the city council if it gets a negative review from you guys. And, and I gotta tell you, it just, to open the door, again, to them building more and changing the fabric of the neighborhoods, I mean, some of the neighborhoods have them. I've got a three-family across the street from my house. But it was built in, I think, 1850. So, yeah, it was grandfathered in. But there are, you know, along Madison, Englewood, Springvale, right? I mean, very few, if any, on some of those streets, you know, multifamily stuff. We gotta have somewhere in Chelsea that people just aren't crammed into. And, and, you know, it just, it's one of the... Prattville's, I'm here representing Prattville, but not just Prattville, all the other parts of the R1 across Chelsea where people aren't claustrophobic and people just aren't jammed in. We have such high density as it is, it's like, why are we, why are we so obsessed with cramming more people into the city? It just, it's crazy. I mean, and we even have more people crammed in than is legally, you know, we have so many illegal apartments in this, in this, we just passed an overlay, right, to help relieve some of that, right? We don't need this, too. And so, I plead with you, this is not a good, this is not a good thing. Please, you know, do not recommend this to the city council.
You may have already covered this, but this proposal doesn't interfere with the ADU law, right? People can still have an ADU within this.
Yeah.
So isn't that accomplishing what we're trying to get at with higher density without changing the character of a neighborhood?
In a sense, yeah, yeah, this does not interfere with the new Affordable Homes Housing, Affordable Homes Act that does allow ADUs by right, so technically people could build a two-family with an ADU, and that's technically three units. And there's nothing we can really do much about that, at least the ADU element. So in some ways, yes, it is, but I also think reducing the minimum lot size could increase density, but it's not necessarily increasing density because we're not allowing like, it's still, I mean, obviously this proposal is trying to propose that we allow three families by special permit, but reducing the minimum lot size might allow for the 519 parcels between 5,000 and 7,500 to be buildable legally, you know? But you're not necessarily saying that you can build a six-family now in Prattville. So I think there's some, what's it, there isn't a consensus within the department, I would say, around like how we feel about this amendment. I think some, it's, reducing lot sizes is a thing within planning right now that a lot of cities are doing.
Can I just point out, though, according to this information here, it would allow basically, with 1,006 that are below the 5,000 square feet, we would, if we changed this rule right now, we would have basically another thousand that we can build on in this new manner, if that's what we're going for. So it would be a thousand, that would change the fabric of that community a lot, be a thousand lots that we can work on, because the rest of them are past the 5,000.
But also, we're just about to change what's going on with Market Basket, that's the big hubbub.
Right.
Right? And I kind of, you know, I sort of see, excuse me, the councilman's point about different areas, you know, we have Admiral Hill, which is, you know, has the parks, and when we have, you know, I'm not trying to say, you know, so I, another reason why I wanna postpone is because I wanna see what happens to Forbes, which is my big pet peeve, which I know is on the horizon. And so, I think we've got, we do have some really interesting projects that will address the housing crisis. I can't, you know, I do agree with the councilman in that you can't just say, okay, we're gonna go to this neighborhood and tack on more housing. It's not that that neighborhood is sacred, or they're better, or they're, it's just that, it's, you know, like if you walk around the cities, like there's Beacon Hill, and there's Back Bay, and there's Dorchester, and there's West Roxbury. If you go to West Roxbury, you would never guess that you're still living in, or Jamaica Plain, you would never guess that you're still voting for Mayor Woo. But, oh, sorry, but, so, right? There's different parts of the city. No, that city is, you know, just like if you go to New York, if you go to Queens, if you go to, you go to Brooklyn, you go to Staten Island, my birthplace, by the way, they're totally different areas of the city, and yet you're, and so, I do think it's, cities do need different neighborhoods to represent different things. And it doesn't mean that they're better neighborhoods or exclusive neighborhoods, it just means that they're a different neighborhood. And I really think that you don't wanna be Somerville.
How is this gonna impact parking? Like, say, someone does a development on a lot and just, you know, occupies as much space as they are able to and gets rid of what had been driveway parking? And they have rental units, for instance, do the new renters get a sticker? I mean, how is that all gonna play out? Because we'd be basically removing a lot of parking spots.
Again, our parking regulations stay the same, so they're still subject to those same regulations. Nine Madison Ave., their lot size was a little over 5,000, and they were still able to provide six spaces. So, I'm just pointing to an example that was just before, so I agree that it would definitely...
So it's per unit, the number of allotted, allowable parking is per unit, not per lot, right?
Yeah, it's per unit, how we...
So if we introduce more units, then there's more required parking on that.
And dimensional requirements, too.
Yeah, so the parking regulations stay the same, they're still subject to that. I agree, yes, reducing the lot size now makes it easier to build on smaller lots, which makes it harder to find space to put parking. But I think we've seen cases where it is doable to put parking. But I also, I am unsure about how strong of an impact this will have. So I still think cases will have to come before the board for review for some sort of dimensional requirement or like, yeah. But also, if the board members feel the character of the neighborhood is more important, then like, that's fine. I think that's part of the discussion, you know?
Well, here's a question for you. If we do, if we don't pass this, aren't people gonna just come to us when they wanna build something that's out of code anyway? And then we review it, and if it's applicable, we pass it and recommend it, and so...
I think on some level, if we were to pass this as written, we'd be making more work for ourselves to that point, because what's gonna...
With all those special permits, a bunch of people are gonna wanna construct three families in Prattville.
Right, because what this doesn't do is it doesn't reconcile this proposal, these changes that this would come with, with any other code provisions. So we would be having an onslaught of people come in here asking for special permits for variances because their plans wouldn't sync with these new, with these new rules that frankly wouldn't make any more sense if we were to pass this as written. I mean, and I wanna put my two cents in, I'm not really even opposed to increasing some density across the city. I mean, I think that's kind of the 21st century that we're in, is, you know, we've gotta kind of think about, you know, where do people go? But that being said, you know, that doesn't necessarily make this right or the right move for Chelsea right now. I think this is not well thought out and could just end up leading to a bunch more issues that this board is gonna have to hem and haw over into the small hours of the night.
I, yeah, I think we keep thinking up unintended consequences, so I'd like to put forth a proposal, a motion to reject this proposal.
I wanna second that.
Can I just have some point of clarification? So are, we're making the recommendation to the city council, they don't have to follow it, right? They could still...
Yeah.
Okay, just curious.
We'll reject it, the proposal on the floor right now is to reject this as it stands, full stop.
Can I offer a suggestion of splitting it up into the top part and bottom part?
No, I'd like to see rewritten. I mean, personally, I'd like to see, like, if you want to propose it again, then it can be rewritten, but I wouldn't like to mess with this.
So, again, you are voting to make a recommendation to city council on the amendment as proposed. If a part of your recommendation is to deny it as proposed and rewrite, like, we did this last meeting, you know, with the other one, so that could be a part of the recommendation if the board votes to have that part of the recommendation.
Yeah.
It impacts too many other parts of the zoning code to be standing alone without showing how it's gonna...
I mean, my personal perspective on it is that adding a special permit for three families is just gonna blow us up with cases. It's out of character, I just think it's an awful idea. But I also think that 5,000 square feet is an adequate space to construct a super cute, in-character property.
So then maybe the consideration should be, is that this gets rejected, but that they have the ability to re-propose to us a better idea at a later point in time.
I agree, but as, as...
As it's written currently.
As it's written, I'm against it.
And before a new motion gets put on, or, yeah, I will say also that we are going through the master planning process, and I do foresee a significant zoning overhaul of our code as it stands. So this could be back before you guys, you know, relatively soon, but possibly more well-thought, hopefully more well-thought out, more comprehensive, and taking into points around open space, lot coverage, all the different other requirements, so...
Okay, so I have put forth the motion.
You state your motion against it.
To recommend against this proposal.
Seconded.
Okay, proposal, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And finally, update on the master plan.
Yeah, so, put this on here, really just to provide an opportunity for Sarah if there was anything coming out of the steering committee meeting recently, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just, just one quick thing on that. We had a pretty rich conversation. It was a quick meeting, these are always, they're just an hour and they tend to spill into an hour and a half, but, you know, there's so much ground to cover, but we really did have a good conversation about housing and how are we gonna, you know, accommodate more housing, and how do we help, you know, if we think 30 years down the road, how are we gonna get people to a place where they're able to build wealth and that we don't have a city full of nothing but rental units? So if anyone has any thoughts on how we should be thinking about, you know, accommodating housing, other than all these ways that we've just discussed? And how we can, you know, one thing that I had brought up is that can we create more rent-to-own situations, so people can get their foot in the door somehow? And, you know, and not have nothing but small units on, you know, in inventory of nothing but small units. I think that's problematic, and it doesn't allow families to stay put. So I think we need to think through all of this in this master planning process, but if any of you have thoughts on...
Yeah, one project I'm thinking of was that construction project on Second Street, where it included six condos for, for purchase, and then several apartment, apartments. I think that could be a great strategy to kind of address all concerns, create ownership opportunities, and create broader housing.
Eric, in Ireland, they use a strategy where the public housing builds housing, takes out a mortgage on it, and then sells the mortgage to the homeowner? And then they basically, they sort of like pay off the mortgage as a rental, almost like a rent to the, to the, I mean, to, it would probably be Chelsea itself, if we have lots that we purchase and build on, then we sort of remortgage it out. So it is something that we should continue to look at long-term, is can we do some sort of variation on the theme on purchasing building, and then we sell the mortgage back to the, to renters, to buy out?
The UK does something similar, where folks who are in public housing have an opportunity to buy their unit. I will say that one unintended consequence of that is often they don't build more public housing, and so then you, you don't end up with any affordable, you know, public housing. So I would, I would definitely be in favor of something like that, but I would wanna make sure that we do it thoughtfully.
Yeah.
One thing I think about that's a little bit... One thing I think about that's a little bit ancillary to all of this, but it's something that comes up with almost every case that comes before this board is whenever we're talking about new housing and new apartments, you know, there's always a, the rub is parking a lot of the time. And so then what we're doing is we're putting these strings attached on and say, okay, well the new, the tenants of the new unit can't have on-street parking permits and, and all sorts of things like that, which in the end, you know, makes those, it kind of dooms those units to become rentals forever. Because, you know, there's a, a certain extra that's missing from it. And one of the things I think about just across Chelsea is that, and especially if we're talking about spending the city's money on, on building things or, you know, becoming a land bank or something like that, there are parking lots that the city owns throughout this, you know, that are kind of scattered around and maybe there could be more. But one of the things I notice is that they're underused. They're just flat surface parking lots, maybe a couple dozen spots in them at best. Why not build a, why not build ramps that would then, you know, give a little bit more relief to that parking issue and make some of those condos that are now coming online a little bit more viable as things to buy instead of just temporarily rent until you can afford a, you know, an apartment that's, that's got a parking space.
That's funny. I was going to suggest almost exactly the opposite, which is that we reduce the parking requirements, which would then enable there to be more housing built with, say, one space per unit, but folks would still be eligible for the on-street sticker parking, which I think is a, a different solution for sort of the same problem.
Another way to, another way to address the same thing.
And I, and I just said this, this morning was, was the, I'd love to see the two-pronged approach actually, which is, which is that we have the city council reconsider this thing where we automatically ban people from being able to have city permits. If they, if they apply for a special permit, they automatically lose their parking right because we're building so much. We need to look at that again.
Mm-hmm.
And then in addition to that, unusable lots or lots that really aren't suitable for building, that we consider buying them and doing sophisticated parking on them, whether it's smart usage, it's rental of parking lot units to, to local residential areas. And definitely for snow emergencies, we need, we need some types of, of lots that are scattered throughout the city. And, but, but I'm not opposed to the idea that they can be rental lots to residents and that the city makes some money back for them, for profit, yeah.
Crazy suggestion, but what if Chelsea provides parking in our designated poor area and offers like some kind of Chelsea shuttle to parking spots to kind of like alleviate street parking? Because there's so much parking off on Eastern Ave. It's insane.
Do you mean during snow emergencies or in general?
Overall, in general.
Interesting.
These are all excellent ideas and it would help me out if you could just.
Type them up.
Yeah.
Just type them up.
Well, I have sort of a, not a very, you guys are looking at ownership as the way, I understand that people think you are more committed if you have ownership, but if you look at it nationwide, this is a big housing crisis. So you, you're, you're, there's, like, people are not buying houses, can't afford to buy houses at all. So I think if your goal is that you have to have ownership, I think that is not something that is in the realm of Chelsea. I think what we need to see to embrace Chelsea, one reason you can get Chelsea's people to, to, uh, yeah, I think you have to accept what Chelsea is, which is a community that changes and leaves and goes and flows. It's not going, it's, it's not going, you know, what you don't want to do, what, eliminate all parking, which is what a lot of cities are doing, Cambridge, Somerville, San Francisco, LA, they're all eliminating parking because they're all saying, if you're eliminating parking in California, you know, it's crazy. But I just think you need to embrace what Chelsea is, which is sort of a very small, tiny community. And so you can't make it what it isn't. And you got, and so I would like to, that's why I'm such a big nut about we have to bring jobs in because that's what Chelsea needs. If you want economic revival, revisionist of Chelsea, you need jobs. You don't, if, if you don't have a job, so it's like, it's, it's wildly important to have a job so that you can walk. I mean, it's like, you don't want to become Boston downtown. I mean, on Washington Street, you don't, you know, you don't want to become a mall, you know? So, so I have sort of a different view. It's like, this is what Chelsea is, this is what Chelsea was, this is what Chelsea is. If you look at what Chelsea was and what Chelsea is, it's not that much of a difference in 20 or 30 years. So now you're saying in 30 years, Chelsea's going to become bedroom, bedroom community like, like Medford?
Yeah, okay, so, but one of the things that you're always pushing for, and I'm fully behind you, are more three-bedroom units and, you know, accommodating families.
Yes, because that's what Chelsea has.
Advocating for multi-generational households. Because I think we need to have some people stay put, generation after generation, to invest themselves in the betterment of the community.
But that's not how, that's not what, that's not how Americans live. That's like, you're looking at like, what, you want Ward and June Gleb to show up? That is not how Americans live. They do not stay in the same place. People do not, that is.
Well, I think those communities can suffer.
Are you living with your parents? Are you living in the same city as your parents? Are you living in the same city you brought up in?
I am.
I am not. You are, yes, but, but most American, most.
Okay, well, it's healthy, it's, it's healthy for a city to have.
But why do you expect Chelsea residents, why do you expect a Chelsea resident to, someone who, who emigrates to this country, why do you expect them to stay in the same place? It's an unrealistic expectation, I think.
I think the real advantage to property ownership, and I think this has come up in this, in these hearings before this board before, is it's all about wealth generation. You know, if you own your property, there's generally an expectation that it will appreciate over time. And what you're talking about is these people that are coming to Chelsea trying to get a foothold. If they can buy property, then they have a chance to build equity, then, then rolls into their next opportunity, whether that's within Chelsea or not. And so to, to, to support homeownership, but one thing that I want to say here, and this is, you know, unpopular politically most places and maybe even a little bit extreme, but my question is this. A, have we thought about restricting short-term rentals and being a lot more strict about who we allow to be landlords? Because when I think about Airbnb and the impact that that's had on housing markets from here to California and everywhere in between, that is a, that's one of the areas where there's a lot of people holding pro, you know, real estate that would otherwise be up for purchase as short-term profit generators. And a lot of these are not very reputable operators. And so I say, you know, if we were to prohibit those or restrict them severely, we might bring more housing stock onto the market naturally that way.
I mean, I don't think that there's a ton of Airbnbs in Chelsea. It isn't a particularly great place to spend the weekend.
We do generally restrict short-term rentals. It's allowed in our zoning, but a standard condition tends to be no short-term rentals.
That assumes that people even follow those rules and they just don't sign up for Airbnb and, you know, wait for us to catch them though.
An option is to, if our problem is that people are purchasing properties, converting them into apartments, let's just increase taxes on properties that are three fam, and greater, and that could incentive, and like, and I think, I think that could like potentially incentivize instead turning them into condos. And if we lower taxes on condos, that can incentivize people to purchase condos in Chelsea. So increase property taxes on owners of, of, of multifamilies and then lower property taxes and kind of even it out on condos. And that could like shift a power dynamic in Chelsea.
Yeah, another thing that goes kind of hand-in-hand with Airbnbs is requiring or incentivizing owner occupied buildings or local developers. I think there's a huge difference when someone has skin into the game as far as bettering their community around them. You know, I think you get better results.
That's one of the worries I always have about some of the developments that come before this board is it's very clear that there's, you know, a developer behind the scenes that is looking to throw together a project quickly, divest themselves and take the money and run. And then by the time anybody has any real thoughts about what they built, they're, they're in the wind, you know?
Right, yeah, I think committees are really wising, wising up to that.
Right. I think we also have to look at like how much density, you know, like, like trying to balance the, the need for housing, but with how much density can the city's infrastructure, just even the roads, the getting in and out of the city, the using the city accommodate long-term? We have to think about that as, as a, as a board because we're, we're getting all of this massive development and it's also another reason why I wasn't on board with this change of use for another district where we just keep on adding and adding and adding. And yet we're not, we're not changing how you get to, to our city or out of our city and everywhere around us is, is building and yet we're tiny. So, I mean, that, that's something I think we really have to consider. And Mimi, I, I hear you on people not being bound to their homes, but I do think homeownership is a good idea and a balance in a city, whenever, you're right. We are Chelsea and we will always be sort of a commuter city with a lot of turnover and a transitional city. But maybe a little bit more balanced for us as, as with maybe a 30% homeownership rather than the super-low rate that we have right now or even, you know, just, just a slightly higher number and that our housing begins to look like, like it could, you, you get a balance between the rentals and, and the homeownership and not just these, these turn-and-burn kind of micro apartments that are just designed for somebody to put up with that for a year or two and then they're moving on. Because who really wants to live in that long-term, you know?
And we live in an age of big data, so we should be able to look at stats of like, you know, what ingredients ensure a, a long-term healthy community? You know, and there's different segments of the population. Like you said, Mimi, there's going to always be a group of people who spend a short period of time in Chelsea and then move on.
But it, it's not just Chelsea. You have to look at, you have to look at others, I mean, look at, look at Cambridge. Cambridge's long-term range, they don't have any middle class anymore. The reason they don't have any middle class is they, because it became incredibly, if you're incredibly wealthy, you, yep, you can live there. If you, if you need housing, you can live there. But if you're making 150,000, $200,000, you can't afford to live in Cambridge. You can't afford to live in Somerville. You're making $200,000 a year and you can't live in a freaking Somerville? What, and you expect us, little city of Chelsea, to be able to, to get to somebody? It's like, it's, it's an, that's what I'm saying.
But we need provisions that are going to be baked into the zoning code and some of these policies that prevent a situation, like, say, what I'm understanding with Vero or some of those new developments, they're not helping local people. They're, in a lot of cases, a second home for people who want to be able to have an easier commute in the morning. What value is that adding to our city? So we, I think we need to think through some of these unintended consequences and build.
So look at Lexington, Lexington's building, what, a $250 million high school that, that won't accommodate in, in, in five years? It's, it's keeping the same population even though the population is growing over there? It's like, you look, because everybody wants to live in Lexington because of the, because of the school system, which is a myth, I think, but, and same thing in Newton. It's like you're building these incredibly expensive, you know, housing development. It's like, that's, it, it's, it's like, the world is, is, is sort of changing. And I think one of the things that's great about Chelsea, the thing that I adore most about Chelsea is that it, it, it needs to change. And, and I agree that homeownership is, there is an investment on homeownership. I'm not against homeownership. All I'm saying is that I think if I, like, I'm very curious to what's going to happen in, in, with the master plan, with, with, you know, with what's going to happen with a, a, a market basket and, and, you know, getting rid of all industry in Chelsea is, I think, not what is, is, is a, not a very good idea. I think it's a long-term disaster, you know, because you, you, you need, you know, it's, yeah, you need the tax base and you need, and you need.
And let me just clarify because I think people have mischaracterized my sentiments on the previous case as being anti-industry. Absolutely not. I, I just want to put that out there for the record. I think we just have to be careful about which neighborhoods are impacted by industry. And I think.
Yes, I, I agree.
We've got plenty of available land in the areas that are zoned for that.
You know, in, in Cambridge, they, you know, they sued the city, you know, to not build, to take where Colonel Sanders was, and to, they're going to build affordable housing. And they said, no, it's too tall. And they lost. They had, they were going to build a 12-story building, now they're going to build a 17-story building on Mass Ave with no parking and it's all affordable housing, right on the corner of Mass Ave and Walden Street. And the, and you go down, you go two blocks in and there's million-dollar homes and everybody in the million-dollar homes are having a fit. And my attitude is, it's on Mass Ave, you're not even anywhere near it. I, you know, it's, it is what it is, you know? It's kind of like, you, you've got to kind of, you know, kind of look at to see what people's needs are. And the need is housing and the need is, which is going to mean you're going to go up. There's no other way to do it. It's, you're going to go up and people don't like that. And, and in the, in the past, going up has been very detrimental in housing projects. And nobody wants to repeat that. But at the same time, I think one of the things that they did wrong in the past for urban planners is they went up, but they didn't bring any businesses around. So if you have someone who is going to live in that building and walk to their, walk to their job, it's very important. And I really hate the argument, not in my neighborhood. And in Chelsea, I, I find that incredibly offensive. It's okay, it's okay to pollute me down the street two blocks, but it's not okay to pollute me in, in my neighborhood two blocks away? No way. You're not, that's an argument I find incredibly insulting to, to, to people. And just because you, you are more comfortable speaking doesn't mean that you get to speak. And that's what this board's for. And I think everybody on this board, everybody on this board cares about the city and that's what I love about it. So anyway, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I think if everyone can summarize their comments and some of the examples, good and bad, that you've seen play out in other places, that would be great. Just shoot me an email.
That concludes our agenda, although I have an announcement. I had neglected to notice on a list that was prepared by William, the dates of our future planning board meetings. And I discovered this evening, overheard really, that the next one is the 15th of December.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth of December. Okay, my announcement is canceled. I was going to say, I'll say it anyway, even though I'd planned to say it on the 16th, that on the 15th of December, for the last 55 years, literally, never missing a 15th of December, I have escorted my wife to dying out, regardless of where we were. Let's see, Buenos Aires, Nairobi, what other weird place? Uh, Victoria, I can't think of, several times we've had to go to foreign countries who were, were in foreign country. Nevertheless, we've never missed a, so I was going to say that I would be missing our next planning board meeting, but I won't. I've come before. I was further going to say that if in fact I missed our next planning board meeting, that this would be the last meeting with me as a member of the planning board. Because the time has come to step down. And I shall, but I'll come to one more on the 15th of December. Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't. Since it's not on the agenda, we can't like talk about it, but I can talk to you after about, yeah.
That's the reason I missed you, sorry.
But who, so you made the motion, who seconded?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.